Hello and welcome to the East Lampeter Township Public Meeting. All participants are now informed that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is also being offered virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the internet or by calling in by phone. The public is also able to observe the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website. Please be reminded that this meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be posted to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. The meeting will now proceed with the chairman calling the meeting to order and identifying all other members present in the meeting room and those joining the meeting via Zoom. The chairman will then confirm those members joining by Zoom can be heard.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, November 10th meeting of the East Lampeter Township Board of Supervisors. All present in the meeting room, if you'll rise and join me in our pledge of our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Got agendas in the back. Sign and sheet as well. Before we get started, we'll entertain public comment for any non-agenda items. Need public comment to see. Anything online? No. There'll be more opportunity at the end as well, and for each of the items on the agenda. We'll start with our consent agenda. We've got a bunch of items, including approval of the agenda, the minutes of the last few meetings, everything listed in detail, including escrow release amounts, as well as the time sessions that are in there. And approval to pay invoices from all funds. Again, everything is detailed on the agenda. Is there an motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent.
Motion by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Gallagher. Any board discussion or public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Yes, sir.
So, on the Sunday and Saturday, was it the day we do their?
They did. They redid all of the tubing, the roadway.
Okay, so that's included with this. Okay, thanks. That's it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections for nays? Move on to overses. There is none. There is also a new oversight. We'll jump right into item seven, our supervisor discussion items. Terr, if you want to give us a quick update on.
The total of the fee did go through draft changes as well as the full secur fee, and both of those will be taken back to the Emergency Services Committee meeting, which is to be held Thursday, November 20th, beginning at 7:00 PM here in in this room. And we'll come back to the board with your changes and any comments that the ESC has for you.
We have full strength on the Emergency Services Committee.
We are. They have been filled. That's.
Right. And then, line painting and park foundation, no report at this time?
No report at this time for either of those.
Anything else from the supervisors? Now we'll turn right into action. Or if you action, minimums. All right, at 8A, approve revised 2026 MMO for non-uniformed.
For updating the valuation report for the non-uniform pension, the the minimum municipal obligation came down from $202,186 to $199,334. But us that the board approved that minimum obligation for coming through.
The 2026 MMO for non-uniform pension. Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mr. Rudd. Public discussion, comment, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are objections, the motion passes. Item 8B, approval of the new Ask Me agreement, the years 2026, 2027, and 2028.
So, a small team of township staff and supervisor Thornton met with members of Ask Me over, I believe, six meetings to come to this conclusion of an agreement with a 3.25% wage increase for each year. A trial in 2026 for four 10-hour days for public works staff, and that's public work staff that's that's out on the roads, in the parks, and maintaining the sewer system. That would run from April until November. And then, if that is functional for the township, we can continue that through the remainder of the contract. If it is not at any point in time, the township can revert back to the current hours, which is 7 to 3:30. There's a clarification on the use of comp time for those employees that don't earn more than 20 hours of comp time. Currently, if you earn up to 84 hours of comp time, then you have to use half of that by August first. But for those that don't earn that much, that can be used at the end of the year. The boot allowance is going up for public works from $100 to $175. And the public work staff had to ask for the on-call person to have a vehicle available to them should they still desire to use it. They would be charged the PUCC charge that's charged to every employee that has a township vehicle. But this would be stocked with the tools that are typically necessary to address sewer calls that happen in the middle of the night. And then, we had a change in the total number of sick days that could be taken without any doctor's notes, and that's up to six at this moment. And that would be, or excuse me, that's what's proposed is six, so that a doctor's note wouldn't be required of that. I recommend that the board approves the agreement, and the union is looking to sign the agreement on Wednesday.
I'll make a motion to approve the new Ask Me agreement for years 26, 2026, 2027, and 2028.
Motion by Mr. Gallagher, second by Mr. Meyer. Any board discussion?
Just to thank everybody who was involved. It did take a little while, but I think there was a great spirit of cooperation in getting to the finish line. And just the 10-hour workday was one of those those issues that we had to work through. And I think with close monitoring of that to make sure it works for us and provides what we need as a township, what the citizens need, the supervisors, and then obviously the department heads coming together and talking about it. But I want to thank everybody, especially our mediators, to do a great job of helping us through that process.
And you might confirm a case when we try out here, either side can pull out of it.
Yes.
And five-month trial.
It's April through November. It's basically daylight savings. So that the public works crews can start jobs, have a lot of daylight time to finish those jobs.
We're getting rid of that.
I was promised removal of daylight savings.
I like the way Mr. Meyer said, appreciate your serving on that committee, might to work through all those issues. Any public comment on motion? Moving on, we'll solve, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those are objections, motion passes. Moving on, item 8C, approval of easements on Lincoln Highway Streets Gate Phase 3 project.
Right, as we collect these easements, we brought them before the board for approval. This one is for 390 Lincoln Highway East, and you have not seen this one yet, so we're just adding to the collection at this point. Still working with other landowners along the East 3 area to obtain other easements.
Right. Then a motion to approve the easement for 2390 Lincoln Highway East. Second. Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mr. Gallagher. Any board discussion or comment? Any public comment?
I find more information about the Phase 3 project. I've been only able to find Days 2, which is very comprehensive of everything. There is an online website, or maybe I can just reach out to staff afterward?
It is on the website, but you can gladly reach out.
Alright, thanks. Keep studying. Thank you.
Get a document, find some there somewhere. Right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are objections, motion passes. Item AD, accept text amendment application from Keystone Custom Homes for optional density incentive provisions within East Lampeter Township zoning ordinance and authorized distribution to planning partners.
Right, so this was received October 20th, and this would encompass the changes that were reviewed informally with the board of the union. Should the board accept this and decide to consider this, then this will be moved forward to our planning partners. We would not, though, be able to put a hearing date until after January 1st, when the new board is in place. And the LCPC won't review this until January 20th. This is the number of text amendment changes that I believe Mr. Van Archek went through with you informally. And it would be appropriate at that hearing for him to go to the event or someone else on his team.
We disagree with what is in the application.
It's your prerogative to accept the application to move it. Do you have, I'm sorry?
Back after the review.
You will have a hearing. It can be accepted. You can choose not to accept it. You can not take action. Or you can accept it.
Perfect. That was no motion to the original, so. The one that we're now amending. But mainly looking at density requirements is the zoning change, but the actual plan that was approved. I'm changing the mix of the units that are in the in the development from what they originally what they last proposed, is not even close to the original at this point.
And that was, and it's, I know that some of this was based on the feedback we get.
Based on feedback.
Get some feedback.
That is correct. You did give some feedback at the informal discussion. And township staff now have the applicant numerous times to go over condition and conditions. You know, density incentive. For 2004, and so obviously, a few things have changed.
Motion to accept the text amendment application in Keystone Custom Homes for the optimal density incentive provisions within the Saint Peter Township zoning ordinance. To be followed by distribution to the planning partners for their review.
We have motion by Mr. Thornton. For a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rudd. Any board discussion or questions? Any public comments? Yes, sir.
Wondering where, what, where this is at here.
This is along Route 23. If you're going north northeast on 23 towards Leola. So this is on the south side of Route 23, there's development by Keystone Custom Homes called Devon Creek in that area.
Yeah, the worship service area.
Let's go freeze and frizz there.
Let's freeze and frizz.
Done Phase 1 of the build-out at this point, and they haven't done Phase 2 or 3.
2 is in process.
2 is in process. Phase 3 is not. This one had challenges with getting water out from the city. And then, they decided not to go that route, and now have our their own waters, if them that the HOA is supposed to take care of.
So they're asking for increased density?
No, it's the state density of for the entire site. But it's, it's in, it's in a different mix of what was originally approved.
With
of units.
Single family detached goes from 134 units to 129. Now house dwelling goes from 59 to 37. Duplex goes from 32 to 50. And then, three per toes, then they so. It was overall a reduction of nine dwelling units, but mainly a mix of how it's laid. A little bit layout. I'm looking at the map here. It looks like they did make the change on that.
Set roadway?
Or on the setback? With setbacks there, but the I think the roadway was back to see what their original.
I have to tear out the roadway part in this one to connect.
We're working out who's there.
There was a, that's correct. It was originally.
The setback, whatever it's on.
Yeah, it's a setback on the east side.
Setback here was increased from what you previously saw in your informal discussion.
I agree with that.
Side guard, the ones that came up with the rear.
Rear guard is 18 feet.
Yeah.
Which, if memory serves me correct, that's actually what's in the ordinance current.
Well, it was less than that.
Yes, previously during the event. That's correct. Of course, all of that would be presented right in the hearing.
Even you mentioned the water, she really concerns with adequacy of the area with adding all these issues.
He has done all the permitting, that's out of the town.
That was part of the delay.
Yeah, so that with the line, this, yeah, this is a zoning tax amendment of changing the mix. The approval of the plan included the having the cistern and a well, and a water treatment piece on top of that, for that would then be managed by the HOA. So my concern at the time was not the water at the time of as it's built, but it's in the future. Every HOA water system that I've in the county, surrounding counties. When you get to when it reaches its end of life. There's usually not enough revenue from the HOA to cover the replacement costs, and typically townships have to then buy those water systems from HOAs. It's what I've seen happen in neighboring municipalities that have done this in the past. So that was my main reason for the mindable that then. But again, what we're doing tonight is just the zoning application to change the density requirements. And mix of the houses on their plan from what it was, what it, what they're proposing. Which would then come back before us. They would have to redo the plan as well.
That's correct. So it'll come back for you through conditional use. It'll come back before you through land development.
If I understand correctly, it's just a change in how they want to position it. There's no change in what you've already proved them made the project bigger. It's just a change in mix.
Yeah.
That's correct.
They would have to go back through of, this changes the zoning to allow this plan what they want to do. To approve the zoning, then they would come back to a conditional use. We'd have to approve the plan.
Let me ask you a different question. The purpose of their request accomplishes what?
It allows them to build units that they're seeing a need for in the marketplace.
Typically, the what I've seen is developments like this that drag on for many years. The market has shifted from when they first built their plan, and they need to update based off of the changing demand in the market. Because they didn't build out fast enough. So it's one where I look at it as do I like the original plan that was approved? No. Is this zoning change sub worse than the current zoning that they're under? No, in many ways, it's probably a little better. So it's one of the zoning change I'm fine with, the plan I still own it. That's not really voted on. Happy to see the rear setback was back to what I appreciate that if they didn't try to push that setback up to another neighborhood, and they did make the change on the roadway, which I thought made sense. That was encouraging that they're working with us on those items. Alright, any additional questions or comments? Alright, so the motion is to advertise this to our neighbors, and then we'll schedule a meeting in the next year with the new board. Alright, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those are objections, motion passes. Next item. 8E, re-zoning application for PG Stolzmann to be property located at 474 Mount Sydney Road and authorize distribution to planning partners.
You've just heard this at your last meeting, and this was a request for approximately six and a half acres to be rezoned next to the current middle school building that would then be developed as residential. So currently, it is zoned agriculture, and they are looking forward to be rezoned to village residential. We have the same options here as you did with the last one, and again, this would be scheduled after the new board is in place. If you choose to move this forward to a hearing.
That the re-zoning application for PG Stolzmann for property located at 474 Mount Sydney Road and authorize distribution to planning partners. Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mr. Rudd. Any board comment or discussion?
Well, I think to note, this is not a working farm, hasn't been a working farm, impractical to become working farm, because it's really, you know, property that's already been developed, it's right up against the school district property. So I do think that's consistent with what we've been saying to development in areas that it makes sense or certainly fits into the characters of that community.
Any questions? Okay. Any questions? Any public comment? Good. We'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are objections, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, item 8F, resolution for destruction of financial files.
So there is a resolution list there that has quite a number of financial files from 2017, 2018, and prior to that, that we are looking to destroy. As for the requirements you are required to adopt recently, and it allows to do so.
You say F?
Alright. So that was added in from the memo.
Motion to per the resolution for destruction of financial files.
This by Mr. Meyer, second by Mr. Thornton. Any board discussion, public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are objections, the motion passes. Item 8G, appoint Ryan Martin to the planning commission with a term ending November 19, 2029.
Mr. Martin submitted a letter to the board and noted his interest in serving on the planning commission. He was one of two members of the public that submitted whatever the interest, and we found a place for the other person that's interested in volunteering for the township, so.
Great, when we have more than one person wanting to volunteer, well.
On a good motion to appoint Ryan Martin to the planning commission with a term ending 11/19/2029.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Gallagher, second by Mr. Meyer. Any board discussion, public comment? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, of those are objections, the motion passes. Item 8H, authorization to advertise the 2026 budget for public inspection.
So, we had two workshops between staff and, and those have been public workshops. The last one was October 28th. The, since then, the township staff went back and we've cut in more areas in the budget, and we also took what was originally from the August workshop, a 5% mileage increase to a 10% mileage increase after the discussion at the October 28th workshop. With all of those changes, we've taken a 1.8 deficit spending now to a $1.3 million deficit spending. That brings our fund balance as a percentage of expenditures projected at the end of '26 to 30%. The board's policy is 18%, and so we're well above that. The, so let's not hope for any snow or anything to break and or an easy 2026. This would take the mileage rate, current mileage rate is 2.055, the the board approves moving forward with this budget. And at the December 15th meeting, that would take the mileage rate to 2.2605. A 10% mileage increase obtains the township approximately $380,000 in additional tax revenue.
We've authorized the advertising of the 2026 budget of public inspection.
Motion by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Rudd. Any board discussion or comment? Questions? Any public? Alright, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those are objections. Passes. Thank you to staff for working with us and putting all that together, with the board showing up to those meetings and weighing in. Thought we had some really good discussion and.
it's like it'll continue in the next year. Our next up we have um managers report. Take the one.
The first item I have is the draft of a sewer EDU equivalent dwelling transfer. We've had a number of these over the last few years. The first, it seems, I, I believe was with the Armstrong buildings at seventeen seventy seventeen instead road and that was um moving approximately five EDUs from one property to the other in order to support the intended number of employees in those two buildings. The second came about with Tanger and the numerous properties there and moving the EDUs around to support the first phase of development, which is the one hundred and twenty eight apartment units. And then the third that we had recently was the Greenfield North properties and moving some of the residential EDUs into the industrial space on Lot Five where we have kettle and fire and am soil. Now, all of those moves have had stipulations, they have been the same landowner, they've had to do um sewer planning modules after the fact, but to obtain those EDUs back and then in Rockvale's case, there's some significant fewer improvements that need to happen in order for the remainder of that development to move forward. So in order to just memorialize how we've been handling those transfers of EDUs and then have a policy moving forward so that um you know, whoever is in these positions in twenty years knows why we did this and how we did it and then there's a record. We also move forward to the sewer authority because all of these transfers have gone through the board of supermasters and the sewer authority. But if you have any comment, by all means, happy to hear it. Either now or through email and we'll bring this back for you to take a look at as a final document. At one of your December meeting. Okay, so the next one, Brianna's gonna share with us some pictures of the pollution reduction project that's been going on down at Flurry Park and behind Strasburg Pike properties. So this is the bridge that gets you into Flori Park from Strasburg Pike. This was a fantastic partnership. So um landowner Ms. Sutton came to us and said, we really need to do something about the, the stream and it's eroding towards the barn that's on her property and it was starting to uh erode towards the sewer line as well. So sewer, they stepped in and said, we'll do design and permitting because this is not just a, a embankment restoration to keep the sewer line intact, but it's also a stormwater project for, under MS four requirement. And so you can choose whichever ones you want. So um Ms. Sutton actually reached out to Lancaster County Conservation District, Conservation District staff uh wrote a grant for Exelon program and received that grant. So all of the construction was done under that grant. So there was no prevailing wage needed because it's just not necessary under that grant. And the sewer authority stepped in and did design and permitting. Um now this was an interesting one because the Conservation District was involved. We actually had to go to Chester County Conservation District to get approvals because ours can't approve their own project. So this will be uh an easement along the creek there that will obtain seventy five thousand pounds of sediment reduction for the township under the MS four permit. We were also able to do maintenance under the bridge. There was quite a buildup of sediment over time. So as they were working in the creek, we were able to do the maintenance without um disturbing what was already disturbed. So that worked out well in our favor. They were then able to use those soils further down along the project to lay back the stream bed uh sides and then plantings will go at. Now, plantings may happen in the spring, not sure about that yet. It's really going to be weather dependent at this point in time. But great project overall.
I was seeing, is that fifteenth that picture was taken? October.
October fifteenth.
Yeah, I think I saw the construction, I was wondering if any growth had happened, I didn't, I haven't seen it since.
The only thing that's, that would have been put in is seed. For it to stabilize. But it is called for trees and shrubs.
What was the overall length of the project?
I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I will get you that answer.
It's great, I drive past it every day, so. We've been, my kids have been watching that with a great interest.
It's the same contractor that did the project at the Gibbons Park and that is flourishing and so he, he does great work and um really intuitive of where to put log berms and where to put um armoring for the sewer line. So just a, a great relationship with him.
Or Paul's a very small team, right? It's like, it's just like him and like one other.
And two other guys.
Yeah.
Anything else? About for public comments? My Mr. Meyer, second my Mr. Thornton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. This meeting is Monday, December first, final meeting of the year, Monday, December fifteenth.